Okay, welcome back. We had to do a quick transition. So the last part of our study session, we're going to be working on. Are we doing Angie's first? We've got the discussion on the legislative session implementation update. Yes, we are ready.
We are ready. And I will just say, we are going to try hard to stay on for three. We don't have a ton of people. We do want to start the goals discussions, our next step of strategic planning, but we don't intend to have a lengthy discussion or action. So we'll take the time we need on legislation and we will plan to end at three with just a preview and some seeds to plant to have folks thinking about what we think we might want to do in May. So take it away Deputy Stallings. Yes, would you like to introduce your guest, by the way?
Oh, you noticed. I have a guest today.
Superintendent did.
This is my daughter Alexandra Stallings, Alex, and she is a sixth grader. She's 12. And she and I are going somewhere straight from here today. So that's why she joined for this last part of the day. Thank you.
Your mom's a rock star. She may not tell you that, but just to let the secret out, we kind of like her. So glad you could join us.
Well, thank you. All right. And so Kelsey, or I could screen share. I just have a new laptop that I'm using. And maybe I will actually get, oh, here we go. Never mind. I can do it. All right, so. If you would like to grab your book, you're welcome to, but actually the focus of today's discussion will actually be more on the implementation tracker that I sent you. And is also in backup. So if you'd like to grab your book, I do have a couple of comments to make about the bill book to begin with. Thanks to some very quick feedback from folks in the field, we found some errors on a couple of the pages in the bill book. So the updated and corrected version of the bill book is in your backup for the board meeting. So it's right here. So you'll see primarily the changes were, we had, we did not identify that HB 412 had been vetoed. So now that's very clear in the book. And then there were some number changes that had just been off by one row on page seven. So if you are looking at page seven in the hard copy, you might want to just rip that page out. And either we could get you, and if you need a hard copy or want a hard copy, we can make you another one. But online, it's already been updated as well as the version that's in backup for Civic Clerk has been updated. And so for those in the public, if you received a PDF copy of the bill book prior to today, please go to our website and look for the most up-to-date version. It has all those corrections made. And thank you to those out in the public who identified some of those errors for us when we were able to make those changes very quickly. Yeah, so the focus of today's meeting, and of course, at any time, if you have any specific questions, you just let me know. It could be about the bill book, but primarily, we're going to be looking at this implementation summary document, which is also in backup for Civic Clerk. As we've mentioned before, in the second week after the session, a large group of staff, actually, we get together for a full day. This year, it was a day and a half, where we dedicate to going through the 166 bills that we mentioned last board meeting. As a, just as a reminder, we were tracking 247 bills, 166 of those passed. We reviewed all 166. And through that process, we determine which bills have action for us. And as well as we try to estimate or give some ideas, I guess is the word, because it's not definitive. Because we know the LEAs need to review the bills for themselves, but we try to identify as best as we can potential action items for LEAs as well. Through that process, we identified 113 of the 166 were of note or of interest enough or required action of USBE or LEAs, and that is what has been included in your bill book. So oftentimes, when you'll meet with legislators or other stakeholders, you'll hear lots of different numbers about how many education bills there are. The 166 that passed, they include things like, you know, HR functions or property tax levies or zoning ordinances or election laws. And so those are, of course, also impact not only USBE, but school districts and charter schools. But the 113 are probably more what we would call core public ed bills. And so if people ask you, that's why you might hear lower numbers from, say, those in the legislature. They might be focused on bills that went through education committees. But as you know, many of our bills often go through other committees, not just education. So given that, after our day and a half of reviewing bills, you can see the numbers that we've identified. We've identified 61 rule amendments or enactments that will need to be done as a result of the session. 10 new programs, and that number 10 new programs actually includes significant reworks of existing programs as well. So they're not 10 all brand-new programs, but they might be large enough changes to existing programs that we put them into the new program list. We have seven RFPs that we'll be engaging with. So those are procurement actions and new contracts or updated contracts we'll be engaging in. Seven new reports for school districts and charter schools, nine new reports for USBE. And then the last column shows that we received $803 million of new funding, which is fabulous. If my memory serves me correctly, it's about 280-ish that are ongoing, or 257 ongoing. And then the remaining, a little over 500 million was one time. So as you scroll, I'm just going to scroll down so you can see as an example, so just as an example, the very first line today in law and licensing, we actually reviewed R277 490 to work to establish a uniform amount for the Beverly, Taylor, Sillings and Arts Program amounts that will be going out to arts educators. So that actually started the process today, earlier today. And that rule will be coming for your full approval in May. And so if you scroll down, you'll be able to see all the bills. One thing I did want to note, two bills in particular, actually three, you'll see multiple rows for a couple of bills. So HB 82, you may remember that was the bill that included about seven of our policy requests in one bill. And so when you'll see that 80, HB 82 has a number of rows because there are different actions, different rules related to different portions of that bill. HB 84 also has quite a few rows and different rules or RFPs or different actions that will be required as a result of HB 84. The other big one that had multiple rows was SB 2. If you remember, that's the Public Education Amendments Bill. And so we have quite a few line item appropriations that came there that might require RFPs or new rule changes as well. So with that, I don't want to take too much of your time because I do know that you have other work to do today. But do you have any questions about the implementation summary or the work that we're doing as staff? To bring all of the, most of this work will be coming to you for your further direction and approval. And anyway, happy to answer any questions.
Anybody? Member Bogus?
First of all, I like this a lot. Thank you very much. Secondly, if I recall correctly, last year, you put it on a timeline. Is, am I, or should I expect that? Or do I need to ask questions about that?
So this was modeled after last year's document. So, but what we may have done is maybe we produced a separate document, and I'm just forgetting right now, where, are you talking about a timeline of when rules might be coming forward? Is that what you're?
Yes. Or maybe that's something that I asked about and somebody sent me. I don't know.
It could be. We do, in, so this is an implementation tracker summary, meaning we've kind of consolidated the key points into this. Our larger implementation tracker has a lot more notes, and it might say so-and-so is to do this. Like it would designate who out of me, Elise or Ben are going to be the lead drafters for different rules. So there is information in there where we estimate which month we'd like it to go to committee. So for example, this BTS A Arts one, we identified it as one that we needed to do sooner rather than later because LEAs are interested in finding out what the uniform amount will be. So we fast-tracked that, if that makes sense. Any of the rules that made it to committee this month are those that we felt like were more urgent than others. So if you, but we don't necessarily give exact months when we do that. We kind of say fall, early fall, or we might say by no later than June committee. So if that information would be helpful for you, we could estimate that. And some of it, we do have in our implementation tracker, the bigger one. We just haven't necessarily designated a month for all of them. Would that be of interest to you, though, for us to give an approximate timeline of when rules might be coming?
I would definitely be interested in that, but I don't have a request for you to spend a whole workday doing it.
Well, let me take a look at what we've already got in the tracker and see how easy it might be for us to glean that out of what we've already done. And then just with the little caveat of a disclaimer that it, these are like approximate estimations of when they'd be coming. And of course, all of that is subject to board leadership and when they decide, you know, to actually put it on an agenda. But let me take a look at that. And if we, if it's not too hard for us to produce, we can send that to the full board. And that way, you all have kind of an, you know, that estimate.
I would really appreciate that. Thank you very much.
Yeah.
Other questions, comment? I have a similar one, and I think you've already gone through it. I guess I wonder if anybody's hearing anything. Last year, the one thing that we had trouble with on the timeline was the educative salary supplement. If you recall, we were cranking, as always, just hadn't, we had lost track of the fact that districts were negotiating their teacher salaries right at the time we were making the rule. And we had a whole weekend of things blowing up, right? And we had to send out a letter. So I just want to open it to the, is anybody hearing anything? Angie and her crew are always on it. They're cranking. They got 150, whatever. But is anybody hearing things out there like, gee, I hope you guys are getting on this one because we're doing something in May? I'm just kind of open sourcing, I guess, any concerns that we might hit. Nobody? Okay.
I, the only one would be, and I think we know, is half-day kindergarten, making sure we have some kind of a, what that half-day kindergarten looks like. But I think our staff are working on that. They've been pulling in people to try to make sure we're ready for May or June, right? Yeah.
So Deputy Stallings, I think you've been with HR directors thus far. And we'll, in a couple of weeks, we will be with superintendents. So we're just kind of starting that process. And that's where we start to really gather that feedback about, we need a rule to reflect this or state board may need to take action on X, or the timeline, to your point, when will Y happen? So I don't know if you want to add to that, Angie, but that's just sort of, the road tour is just beginning, which is where we gather a lot of that feedback.
Thank you. Yes, that is correct. I'll be meeting with charter directors on Monday. And then also education attorneys on Friday. And then, of course, we'll do the superintendents and BAs the following week. So you're right, we do, we get a lot of feedback during those meetings from LEA leaders. The, this BTS A Arts was an example of one where we were told this would be a good one to get feedback or to have done earlier. The kindergarten rule, I believe we have coming in May to committee. That is my recollection, last time I checked in with staff. And so yes, if you do hear of other rules that LEAs would like us to get on to and quicker, we will do that. There are a couple that are bills where we could perhaps do some rulemaking. Like the board has the discretion, we're not, you are not required to do rulemaking. But oftentimes, when we will hear about those areas of something maybe that we didn't identify as, yes, we need to do a rule on this, but then, but then once the bill starts to become known, you might get feedback from people saying, you know, it'd be really helpful if you defined this or if you worked, gave some more direction in this area. So that's where we often will get feedback when we're meeting with charter directors or district superintendents, et cetera, on some potential discretionary rulemaking that you might engage in. And you might get that similar feedback from your constituents. So let us know what you hear. And if there's something that needs to be done quicker, we can generally make that happen.
Thanks. Member Lear and then Member Davis.
I wondered, and I didn't look closely enough at the agenda for standards and assessment. So maybe it was described there. But on that appeal process that the board would participate in under the sensitive materials, one of those two, one of those two bills, or maybe it's two rules that relate to the bill. Anyway, are you planning on spelling that out or you working that out? Or is it, are we just going to wait till, I don't know, see if it happens? What's your plan?
It's done. No, it's not really done. We're still working on it, but it, the discussion's happening. It'll be here by next month.
So is it in standards and assessment?
Yeah, it's, it's under the library rule that we changed the sensitive materials rule, and it's, it'll be rolling out for next month.
With you, is that going to happen in your special meeting? Is that?
We'll finish it then. So yeah.
Okay. All right. Because I just have some opinions. So I'll communicate those to a committee member.
Yeah, that would be good.
Thanks.
Member Davis.
Thank you. I just had a couple of questions, Deputy Stallings, on some of the initial numbers that you gave us. First of all, what was the total number of ed bills that passed?
There were 166 that passed. And 113 made it into the bill book.
Okay. And then of those 166, you said there are 61 required rule enactments that are required via those, out of the 166, 61 enactments?
Correct.
And then, so I heard new programs, RFPs, reports and such. How many amendments will be required? Or is that counted in the 61?
Thanks for that question. It actually, some of these will be repeat rules. So that's 61 incidents of changes that are needed. I'm trying to think of a rule where, so it could be that R277 628, it may be that HB 29 is the only one. But there may be another bill that also requires us or would necessitate amendments to 628. So I'd have to look, there will be some repeats in here. For example, I think that 407, you can see right there on screen, is next to HB 82. And if I remember correctly, it has also been identified as a rule that needs to be updated due to HB 5415. So do you see there where 407 is actually listed twice? So it doesn't necessarily mean 61 rules. It means 61 required.
Changes.
Changes, yes.
So some new rules and some amendments, but total 61 changes. Because I remember one year, we had 80 ed bills pass and 20 of those required new rules, required us to write rules. And I just want to take this minute to specifically to do in code. And we try not to go beyond the law, but to clarify, for those of you out there who want us to write a rule about everything under the sun, we have actually been asked to be very careful and cautious in that space. Just want to throw that out there. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Any other comments or questions? If not, thank you for amazingly quick, thorough work. This is one heck of a guide. I know a lot of us are getting questions. So thank you for everything that goes into this. Yeah. That's the end of a Herculean effort where the rest of us took a deep breath when the session ended, and Angie took a short breath and then dove back underwater. So you and your whole team.
And if I may, Chair Moss, that's exactly what I wanted to mention, is the whole team. Because there, there are a lot of people that work on that bill book. And all of the work that goes into that implementation summary, Greg Canal and Barbara Fuentes, Ryan Bartlett, those three do a lot of the heavy lifting, especially Greg and Barbara, but then also Abel, our intern, Huskinson, Vanessa Barnes, and others. So it is a whole team effort. So I just wanted to call them out as well for all their work.
Thank you and thank them. Right on. All right. So let's turn with our remaining time to Chief of Staff Sarah Young. And let me just set the table here. We had a number of discussions leading to our mission and vision. We had a bit of a look back with reference to the strategic plan that we have been operating under. We have an opportunity to reevaluate, take stock of where we set our goals, where we've come and where we want to be going. So I've asked Chief of Staff Young to conduct some of that look back. But I just wanted to frame it up, and I've reached out to the committee chairs. We're going to obviously have a good thorough discussion from the board, have some votes and decisions. But we have felt that one way that might guide us in being proactive as board members, and especially in the committees where a lot of our work is done, is that if we asked each committee to contribute one of these goals that would be specific to their committee, but a broadly applicable goal, and something that could guide their work. And so I think we've had positive feedback from our committee leaders. Obviously, this would be subject to board vote, but we're thinking about how we, as board members, can play a role in that in sort of having our agendas be driven toward what we want our outcomes to be. So kind of the old, good old begin with the end in mind idea as it relates to committee work. So we can talk about that next time, but I know Standards and Assessment's already been talking about it. Finance has been doing some things, Law and Licensing may have already. But I think, you know, the world's changed just a little bit in the five years. You think about 2018. You know, we started this process last year. So there's just a few things that have gone down. And that gives us an opportunity for reflection and then just say, okay, how do we charge out of that situation we found ourselves in? And I think this is probably, hopefully, a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity to, to live through something like that and say, okay, where do we want to go from here? And the goals that we've been working under certainly guide that. There's been a ton of effort into the existing goals. And so we have the opportunity to say, okay, what do we carry forward? Do we have a new perspective on where we want to go? And so Chief of Staff Young is going to help us do the look back. And then we'll ask folks to think about this, especially on the committee perspective, but also more broadly as a board. And one option that we've discussed is that each committee might contribute a goal. And then we might also have other goals, two or three, it's up to the board, that are, that are, you know, broad goals set by the full board. But part of that would be unique to some specific work that our committees do. So with that, Chief of Staff Young, take it away. And I'll just come back at the tail end. You don't need to reserve any time for me. We only have 15 minutes. But that will get us started, and then we'll come back in May and get into it.
Sounds great. Thank you so much. Chief of Staff Sarah Young. And so I really think Chair Moss has set this up in a way that really helps to capture what we're going for today. So really, we're just setting the stage to be able to create a future-facing action plan for the board to develop goals in alignment with your updated strategic plan. So that future action component will probably occur in May, maybe June. And we're not looking to take that action today, but to just set that foundation. Next up, I just always like to highlight the policy requirement here, which is that the board shall create, maintain and review on a regular basis the statewide comprehensive multi-year strategic plan for improved student outcomes. A very similar phrasing is captured in your board bylaws as well. And that is something that we use in terms of informing what we're doing moving forward. Really specifically, I'm going to highlight two phrases. First and foremost, multi-year strategic plan. So a lot of times when we're looking at goals, there's always a question of grain size. I'd encourage the board members to think about, what is the grain size that allows your staff to work on something over several years? If it's something we can accomplish in maybe one or two board meetings, that might be too small of a grain size, still warranting staff action, but not necessarily at the level of a goal. If you're looking at something like, you know, transitioning to flying cars in driver's ed, that's probably more than several years out and probably too large of a grain size. So just a point of context that we like to share. In terms of structure for the actionable strategic plan, we really do appreciate as your staff, understanding the board's goals around what proactive efforts we can orient towards to be able to drive the policy outcomes that you're seeking. So this includes how we, as your staff, then look to prioritize our resources, which are both fiscal in nature, but also staff time. These are the things that really help us focus our work at the agency. And we're really grateful for you as board members to help clarify for us as your staff how we can actualize your vision for the system through this conversation. When we talk about the comprehensive strategic plan in the high level, you've already made updates to your vision and mission statement. And so you'll see we're on kind of tier three of that, which is our goals, which are designed to align our efforts towards the end. What are the results that will lead to the fulfillment of your vision statement? And that's what we're looking for direction from in future meetings from you as our board. I do like to always include our vision and mission statement. This is mainly included as a reference point for all of the committees and the greater board when you're developing your goals to be able to see how those goals tie into the achievement of this comprehensive vision that the board has put together. So as far as the board's strategic plan goals, just to quickly touch on, the previous strategic plan had four goals that were identified by the board. This includes early learning, safe and healthy schools, personalized teaching and learning, and effective educators and leaders. You'll see that the statements underneath them are pretty high-level in terms of what is the outcome that we are seeking with each of those goals.
um, in a way that really helps to capture what we're going for today. So really, we're just setting the stage, um, to be able to create a future-facing action plan for the board to develop goals in alignment with your updated strategic plan. So that future action component will probably occur in May, maybe June. Um, and we're not looking to take that action today, but to just set that foundation. Um, next up, I just always like to highlight the policy requirement here, which is that the board shall create, maintain and review on a regular basis the statewide comprehensive multi-year strategic plan for improved student outcomes. A very similar phrasing is captured in your board bylaws as well. Um, and that is something that we use in terms of informing what we're doing moving forward. Really specifically, I'm gonna highlight two phrases. First and foremost, multi-year strategic plan. So a lot of times when we're looking at goals, there's always a question of grain size. I'd encourage the board members to think about what is the grain size that allows your staff to work on something over several years? If it's something we can accomplish in maybe one or two board meetings, that might be too small of a grain size, still warranting staff action, but not necessarily at the level of a goal. Um, if you're looking at something like, you know, transitioning to flying cars, um, in driver's ed, that's probably more than several years out, um, and probably too large of a grain size. So just a, a point of context that we like to share. In terms of structure for the actionable strategic plan, um, we really do appreciate as your staff um, understanding the board's goals around what proactive efforts we can orient towards to be able to drive the policy outcomes that you're seeking. So this includes how we as your staff then look to prioritize our resources, which are both fiscal in nature, but also staff time. These are the things that really help us focus our work at the agency. And we're really grateful for you as board members to help clarify for us as your staff how we can actualize your vision for the system, um, through this conversation. When we talk about the, um, comprehensive strategic plan in the high level, you've already made updates to your vision and mission statement. And so you'll see we're on kind of tier three of that, which is, um, our goals, which are designed to align our efforts towards the end. What are the results that will lead to the fulfillment of your vision statement? Um, and that's what we're looking for direction from in future meetings, um, from you as our, our board. I do like to always include our vision and mission statement. Um, this is mainly included as a reference point for all of the committees and the greater board when you're developing your goals to be able to see how those goals tie into the achievement of this comprehensive vision that the board has put together. So as far as the board's strategic plan goals, just to quickly touch on, the previous strategic plan had four goals that were identified by the board. This includes early learning, safe and healthy schools, personalized teaching and learning, and effective educators and leaders. You'll see that the statements underneath them are pretty high level in terms of what is the outcome that we are seeking with each of those goals. Um, they're all focused around a student outcome, which aligns with the policy language of driving student outcomes with the strategic plan. Um, and yet created an opportunity for the board to provide a direction to staff to work in these key areas, creating cross collaborate or cross-departmental teams to be able to advance the educational system in these areas. This is where we get to the choose your own adventure section of this presentation. So, um, I've created kind of four questions that the board may want to learn more about in terms of our goal structure, history of selecting the previous goals, the agency structure for operationalizing these goals, reporting on goal outcomes or examples of outcomes from previous goals. If there are any, uh, direction from our board members here on any of these topics that resonate of interest, I'm happy to address them. If not, we will get to the end.
I have a question.
We've got Member Bogus, then we've got somebody online. Who's, who's online? Cindy, Member Davis. Okay, so Member Bogus, then Member Davis.
I, I would love to know the agency structure for operationalizing goals, please.
Thank you for that question. Um, so as far as the agency structure for operationalizing the goals, um, we really do take this, um, comprehensively as direction that translates across the entire agency. Um, so from a system strategy, you are setting the goals through our USBE strategic plan. As an agency, we then break down that goal into cross-functional strategy teams that engage in progress monitoring that I'll touch on here briefly. And then you should know that those goals for many of our employees across the agency translate into their individual employee evaluations here through our Utah Performance Management System or UPM, which is something that we do in partnership with our HR department over the course of, um, a fiscal year as part of our agency HR processes. So we really try and address it at multiple levels. And that's why these goals are so important is because they truly translate to how we hold ourselves accountable as employees that we're, um, helping to advance the board's work as you've described. So as far as the cross-functional implementation teams, we break it down into this type of organization. So we have goal leaders or one individual, uh, usually a member of leadership superintendency who identifies as your key point of contact for each goal that is established. Currently, your goal leaders include Assistant Superintendent Darren Nielsen, Assistant Superintendent Leah Voorhees. Um, we also have, um, Director Jennifer Thromson leading a goal. And then we have one goal that has just transitioned, um, but was previously led by Sarah Whitkey, um, in her role with early learning. Underneath each of those, we then have strategy leaders assigned to each of the strategies that are identified to help achieve the goal. That is usually one or two staff and we oftentimes try and choose staff from different areas of the agency because we're looking for a representation of not just maybe a key expert in early learning, but also how is that happening in special education, assessment, our financial ops components? We like to have a diverse set of experts across the agency, helping to inform how we're moving these goals forward. In addition to that, we have strategy team members. They are nominated by Leadership Council, um, and their management to be a part of efforts that really think, where we think they can bring a value add as well as additional capacity to be able to achieve the goals more quickly. We have meetings, um, with each of these individual goals and strategies that are in this format where we have a sum meeting. That's going to be each of the strategy leads who meet with myself and the goal leaders. Um, we go through a rubric of an action plan where they rate themselves in terms of the strategies and their, um, likelihood of achieving that strategy. It's also their opportunity to ask for additional resources or direction related to achieving individual outcomes. From those meetings, we bring those to, um, our superintendency twice a year in stocktake meetings. And that's where the goal leader has an opportunity to report out on the progress for each of the strategies to our superintendency, again, to be able to identify levers and resources that help to advance this forward. These are also the meetings that help to inform the state superintendent's reports to you, which she does monthly, um, to be able to include updates to the board on our progress towards individual goals. Any questions about that?
Seeing none. Anybody on the line? Oh, Cindy, sorry. Member Davis.
It's okay. No problem. Yeah, I just wanted to clarify something. It, it sounded to me like you were saying that we are aborting our current goals in and, and asking each committee to bring a goal in lieu of, of our current goals. Am I hearing that right or, or can we continue our current goals? Cause I don't think we've met those yet and then add to those with a goal from each committee or, or just wanna make sure I understood what you said in the beginning.
Yeah, that, it was not my suggestion to abandon them. It was to evaluate them, see what we wanna keep, see if we wanna change. But I, I guess the significant change that, that we've discussed among leadership and among leadership committees is that how can we give ownership to the committee? So that would be part of it, but not all of it. I think we have four general board goals. If you look at those, and I guess you think about committee, uh, those of us in finance, for example, um, you know, how does what we do in finance relate to early literacy, effective, uh, teachers, um, safe and healthy schools and competency, you know, personalized competency-based education? Well, it, it does in ways, but we don't necessarily think about that as we set our agenda. We don't necessarily report to ourselves or out to the board. So I think what, what would be new about asking each committee to come up with one is it would be something the whole board would accept, but you would focus on it and use it to drive the agenda, report to yourself and report out so that we each are kind of saying, look, we, we've got a piece of this. And in, in finance, we've talked about ROI and some other things, and so that might formulate one of the goals. The coin of the realm in, in Standards and Assessment is something else, right? It's assessment standards. But that, that would be the idea, but it does not mean that we abandon those. It means we evaluate them and formulate broader, I guess, um, both committee-specific three goals and then broader goals, which could be these or an update of those. Does that make sense? That's kind of where I, kind of where we've discussed it, so.
Yeah, kinda, I see these as field goals. The four of these and that the things that we do in the agency are supporting these four goals. And what I'm hearing you say is that the committee would do something, a specific goal, something like um, working on efficient resources towards meeting these goals or something like that. So there would be more agency type of goals. Is that what I'm understanding?
I, I think it could be. I, I, I wanted to just sort of set out a framework and the substance would be something we would discuss. But I, I do see a, a role for a committee in having something specific. So those could obviously be field-generated. Our, our goal here is to support the field. But yes, I would see the committee goal as something that supports whatever broader goals we have in mind, whatever field-oriented support we wanna provide. But then we sort of break that down and use it to drive that agenda. So, yeah, I, I think all of this at the broader board level is under, you know, discussion. What are we hearing? What are we seeing? How, how have we done at meeting our current goals? And, and then that add that piece that we would either add to or, you know, you could have a couple or three broad field-driven goals or, you know, three or four. But one, one for each committee would be a new element of that.
Okay.
Remember, yeah. I'm getting into swapping my consonants. It's late on a Friday. I'm going into the real Earl thing. Cindy, did you have a follow-up though?
Just a quick follow-up. I, I thought we had voted to just maintain status quo on the goals before and, and use the new mission and vision and maintain these goals. So I just, and it's, it's fine either way. I'm fine to come back. And I, I think it actually, there's some wisdom in, in discussing the goals. But just wanted to be clear, I thought we had voted to do that. And so I'm guessing three people wanted this on the agenda, so we're revisiting it now, just for process purposes.
Yeah, I don't recall a goal to maintain the existing goals going forward for another five years. I don't think we ever had.
Yeah.
We go not to add new ones.
I don't recall any such vote. Does anybody else?
The, the, what was the vote? What was the question?
The vote to keep the current goals? I think we just went into mission and vision with the idea that we come back to the goals and do that, that discussion around the, uh...
No, we just did, we did the, we did the mission and vision and now we're at goals. And so are you suggesting we don't look at the previous goals and then decide where we wanna move forward? Is that what I'm?
No, my understanding is what we had voted on was that, um, we would keep the new mission and vision and that we would continue with these goals because we had voted not to, um, discuss more goals. I'm, I'm fine if we do and if I misunderstood, then that was.
I think, I, I don't think that was ever.
I don't recall any, but I think we deferred discussion of goals till we had our mission and vision, cause that should drive those goals. So the idea was to come back to goals.
Right now, currently.
Yeah, those, those are what we've been operating under. And now that we have a mission and vision, now's the opportunity to come back and take a look at the goals.
Got it.
Vice Chair Earl?
Yeah, I, and maybe I, I see it's just a little different because I do, those are the goals we have in place right now. But that's why as a board, we have that discussion. I don't think you said a new mission and vision and say, okay, and then all the other goals are still the same. I think we have to evaluate them and say, where are we? Where, where do we wanna move forward? What's the next thing? Um, yeah, that's, yeah, that's.
The cycle.
That's, that's right. I don't know why we wouldn't relook at them. Some of them may, may stay, some of them may not. I don't, I don't know. We haven't had that discussion yet.
Chief of Staff, oh, go ahead.
Yeah.
Chief of Staff Young, well, we're in the cycle. Yeah, we're, we're, we're at the point where we now have a new.
Looking at goals and deciding where we wanna head.
We've got a new mission and vision. Now we look at what goals will help us to get there. Oh, you mean how, how, in terms of progress? Yeah. Back to you, Chief of Staff Young. If we don't have any other questions about process, back to Sarah. Oh. Yes.
And this is, this was just actually just trying to, uh, follow through the document here. Cause I did see that we have our updated vision and mission. So then we're taken down to page eight, which is our board previous strategic plan, which implied to me, so I was following that through. I think what Member Davis is saying is on page nine with our goals. Um, and then what we just heard here, what questions do we have? And then it gives us a, a history, which takes us all the way back to twenty eighteen, October twenty eighteen, August twenty eighteen, June, July. I was, I think I was assuming that we would maybe be copy and insert a duplicate and then updating those with twenty twenty-four and even rolling that back to twenty twenty-three when we started to update our vision and missions. I was, is that right? We're gonna make kind of a new slideshow with updated dates cause we are changing our vision and mission, which then would make sense to me that we would update our goals. And I have one more question too, cause, um, we were encouraged to think about maybe what our committees, what goal we would want to bring from our committees. Um, and I should know this, but I don't, so I'm gonna ask. Do we have our own kind of vision and mission paragraphs for our committees? Like the goal of the Standards and Assessment Committee is to?
No, so.
Is that formally written anywhere?
It's not. So, so let me answer both of those.
Kind of what we're looking for as well or just?
So, so, I mean, this is all subject to the board, but our, our idea was this. We, we now have a, a new mission and vision from the board. We have still in place currently until they're, unless and until they're changed the existing goals. So we wanted to look back, see what those were, how they were set, where we've come. And then as a board, decide if we wanna keep or change those goals, come up with new goals. And the new element to that is to ask the committees to think about how their work helps accomplish the more, the board mission and vision. So as we sit there in finance and we deal with all the money questions, how are we contributing to opening doors of opportunity through organizational and academic excellence? So, so I think we kind of see it as, how is our committee work, which gets down to what is our agenda? What are our action items? How is the work that we do in committee helping us to achieve that mission and vision of the board? And depending on what we all come up with, the overall goals of the board. And so those goals might be specific academic achievement. They might be other forms of success. And then I think the opportunity is for the committees to say, okay, having that discussion, what part of that do I own as a committee member of X? That's the idea. So it's not a unique mission and vision, but how does the work that we do when we come in on Friday sort of bring all of us into those goals that we now set, either maintain or redo? So, yeah, I, that, that, that's been kind of the, and it's partly been broken up because we had a break for the legislative session. But that, that's, that was sort of the intent all along is start with that load star. Is that the right word for the mission and vision? What's the load? North Star, Load Star?
Sounds like a verb.
Wanderer in the Lone Star, have a, have a, pick a saddle. And Jenny's got the boots, right? So, so that, that sets where we're going. And then the question is, how do we get there, right? And that's goals and then specifically some committees. So back to, back to Sarah. The question here is, how were these formulated? Why were they chosen? Because that might inform what we do at this point with our part of the process looking forward.
Thank you. I will just clarify, because of the way we, we tried to structure this, noting it was at the end to give the board that opportunity to say, these are the, the items we care about and these are the ones that, you know, we don't need that history. The way the slideshow is set up, um, the, um, specific timeline that you're referencing falls under our response to the history of selecting goals. So that was more just for your kind of historical awareness that this is how the previous board um, and their timeline for selecting those so that, um, just recognizing we have some board members who were here for that and others who were not, you just had it as a point of reference, like where did these come from? Um, and what was the process? Our, our thought is, is that that history, um, does not necessarily, to Chair Moss's point, dictate exactly how you have to go about this moving forward, but more just for background context. So I will, I will go back to, um, Board Member Booth's question, just quickly, um, talking about an example of an outcome. Um, so it's important to note that we report outcomes related to our efforts on the strategic plan in a couple of different ways. One of them, as I've already mentioned, is in the monthly superintendent's reports at board meeting. In addition to that, you do have a specific section under the board related to, uh, on the website for the strategic plan, um, where we capture measures, resources that staff have created to advance the goals. And then finally, once a year, we also have an annual implementation report that is also posted on your website. An example of a goal that, um, I can quickly highlight, noting we're in the final minutes, um, is early learning. Um, so this was a goal set by the board to, uh, for each student to start strong in early grades with foundations in literacy and numeracy. You can see that we had four strategies underneath that, focusing on promote, uh, promoting high-quality instruction in early grades, increasing optional access to extended day kindergarten programs, increasing optional access to high-quality preschool, and then increasing engagement of families with young children and early learning experiences. A couple of outcomes, um, this comes from our twenty-three, uh, implementation update. You'll see that as your staff, we were able to report at the strategy level the number of teachers engaging in letters, as well as in some of our additional mathematics coaching opportunities. We specifically highlighted for the board, the successful advocacy for the additional appropriation for full-day kindergarten. So in terms of that goal, really setting the stage to direct staff to invest time, effort and resources, we saw that come to fruition with the legislature providing and responding to the board's priority to provide additional funds. Um, we also had additional cohorts in early learning. So when we found additional resources, we were able to expand letters to some of those younger grades on, based on the board's actions. And then finally, uh, staff working with larger community groups like Five Before Five, um, to be able to support families with those earning early learning opportunities. To capture it in more of a legislative lens, I think you can see outcomes where these goals drove funding decisions, um, tripling, uh, what was originally optional day kindergarten, moving into full-day kindergarten, seeing legislative action towards early grades professional learning, as well as the early, early literacy action that staff worked on. And then in terms of policy, working on revamping that K-three reading program um, that we saw in, to address numeracy as well in twenty twenty. To give you a very high-level outcome for that, based on the twenty twenty-three session, so not this current one, twenty twenty-four, if you looked at the board's approved policy requests, um, we really do see the strategic plan and the board driving a really positive outcome. We're seventy-eight percent. Where 78% of the board's policy requests were passed, many of those aligning with your strategic plan. In addition to that, of the top five budget priorities, ranging from the 2020 to the 2022 general legislative session minus the year of COVID, we also saw 13 out of the 15 board's top five priorities being funded as driven by conversations around coherence with the strategic plan. I share those stats with you because I think it's powerful in terms of an opportunity. When you as a collective body tell us as staff, these are our priorities and this is what we want you to work on, we have a very high outcome of that yielding positive results of achieving those outcomes for the greater system.
Thank you, thank you. Any questions, comments? I, I don't see any. Let, let me just say, I think what we have an opportunity to do, and I, I want to follow up on something else the Chief of Staff Young has been heavily involved in, and that's our performance measures and the outcomes. A lot of that's been dictated by the legislature. They say, we do all these things, we want you to measure the outcomes, right? And so there's been a lot of analysis by Chief of Staff Young of shifting to measures that are sometimes called outcomes that are actually inputs. And so for example, if we say we are working on good technology in the classroom, right? Which is something Chief of Staff Young herself led in an earlier life. Getting goods, you know, equipment in the classroom, getting it in there and getting it used is one outcome. But the ultimate outcome is that it's driving student learning and success. So I think part of what I see here, and I hope we all might think about, is that, is what we are doing contributing ultimately to student success? And we have differences of opinion about what that looks like. But can we focus on how those intermediate measures contribute ultimately to that student's success? And so part of what we're doing with ROI, and again, Chief of Staff Young has helped there as well, is you're looking at those intermediate measures and asking, do those contribute to the ultimate goals that we have? And so we did have some larger numeric goals in here that we might talk about next time. That, that's, I think, one of our opportunities is to say, okay, if we want 66, 70% of this, that, and the other, how is what we're doing today in my committee contributing to that? Have I analyzed the intermediate outcomes that come from my work? And have I looked at whether they contribute to student success and do I need to reevaluate? That's what I hope personally is, is one of the things that we can talk through. So that when we go into committee, our staff have always teed up great stuff for us to do. I hope we take the opportunity proactively as committee members to say, okay, how is this month's committee meeting in X, Y, or Z committee going to contribute to the intermediate outcomes that I've analyzed and determined to contribute ultimately to student success? And have that thought in front of our minds every time we go in there, knowing we have a range of opinions about what student success looks like. I hope this is a chance to think proactively about the work we do as board members and have a better, a little bit better connection, I think. Our staff are always stocktaking and looking, but I'm not sure that always drives our discussion as the board. So that's kind of my challenge as we've thought through this, is that we can think about every day, am I producing student success or contributing to it through academic and organizational excellence, right? We have that great opportunities, the USBE, to kind of set a high tone and then support that. So I'll quit rambling. We, we were going to have a good discussion as a board. I think we start that in May. I don't expect any votes necessarily. Maybe we do. I, I think we had a great discussion about mission and vision. We, we had a lot of philosophical discussion. Ultimately, we got something that I think is a great representation of where we want to go. So that's the next stage. Let's hash it out. Let's explore. Let's hear what people think goals are. And then let's, over the next couple of months, come up with some concrete things that drive the vision for the next five years. Yes, back to you, Sarah.
If I could just add a couple of key opportunities and awareness items from staff's perspective. When the five goals were set, it was not our expectation that, that, oh, are we done? Okay. It was not, it was not our expectation.
You're being stung off like the Oscars.
It was not our expectation that those would be the goals in perpetuity for the rest of our lives here in Utah Public Education. So just for, for your awareness, we've never had that expectation. And so I, I don't want that to be misperceived because they have been our goals for five years. We always expected to revisit them and, and very much appreciate the board's direction in terms of what that looks like. The second thing I'll add, you'll notice in the four existing goals, they are not inclusive of every single action we take care of the agency. If we had goals that were inclusive of every single action, it's kind of that, you know, regular, regular statement where if we prioritize everything, then nothing is a priority. And so we, we do not have an expectation that everything is going to be captured within the goals. What we do appreciate is the opportunity to know from you as a collective body where you want us to prioritize our focus. And so having a really clear and, I'm going to say this hopefully respectfully, but concise list of like, this is what we really want you to focus on is so helpful for us as staff because then we're able to bring you action and information and resources that really meet your needs. And so we appreciate that type of direction and are really interested in supporting you to be able to help provide us that direction moving forward.
All right. Thank you, Chief of Staff Young. And we can probably look next time a little bit more of those numerical measures a bit because we did have some numeric goals. And, you know, again, the world went crazy during these five years, so let's revisit that. But any thoughts in the meantime? Feel free to shoot them around. Go to Sarah. Any final comments, questions? I don't know. I remember my daughter on an LDS mission standing in front of the Trevi Fountain with no, no soul in sight. That, that's what I recall is the world going crazy. COVID, it, it was, but, but, but weird, right? I mean, yeah, well, as long as you have your papers in hand, you spend more than five minutes and then you, you're gone, right? I mean, yeah, COVID was nuts, but here we, here we are, big catastrophe, ton of money. Where do we go from here? So, okay. Well, thanks all. We look forward to talking more in May. And I'll look for a final, sorry? Yes, look, final motion? So moved? All in favor? Aye. Okay, thanks. See you in May.
Thank you, Chair.